Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting into order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome everyone. We'll call Mr. London.
Oh.
Yes.
Tony.
Yep.
Haglund.
Yes.
Clatt.
Yes.
Schrader.
Yep.
Alright, that takes us next to the approval of the agenda. If no one sees anything on it that they have any issues with, I will entertain a motion to approve that as presented tonight. Second. There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That takes us next to, I need to get it, pull out my, yeah, my cheat sheet. Here we go. We have one conflict of interest disclosure there for Mrs. Stodderow. If there are no questions, seeing the following conditions have been met that the individual has provided full written disclosure, the school board has reviewed the essential terms of the contract, and the terms of the contract are fairly reasonable and not contrary to public interest. I would entertain a motion to approve the waiver as presented tonight.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. There's no committee input tonight, so that takes us next to our general business items and under administration reports, I will turn it over to Superintendent Larson.
Very good. Thank you. So it's been approximately 102 days, working days that is, that doesn't count Friday or Saturdays and Sundays and early mornings and late nights, but approximately 102 days. And when I originally stepped in, I presented a 100-day entrance plan that I was going to utilize to gain familiarity, et cetera. So first I'll tell you that the 100-day entrance plan was built on three Ps: purpose, process, and planning. And the purpose was pretty simple, build positive professional relationships, build a fundamental working knowledge of the district, assess the current state of our educational system. The process involved is quite simple, listen, learn, and share. So I met with, well, each individual board member identified five people. I met with each individual board member along with their five people. I met with each of our individual administrators and a wide variety of other folks through contacts that were made. So listen, learn, and then ultimately share my foundational beliefs on surrounding education. Lastly, the final phase surrounds planning, and that's plan-action items to enhance and promote the educational success of our children. So I would tell you there were a few common themes that were taken away from the individual meetings that were held. I would tell you I received tremendous insight on specific individual things, whether it be, for example, a curriculum item, or whether it be a specific detail that they thought maybe needed to be evaluated or looked at. But I did take away some common themes that I wanted to share with you tonight. These are not specific to one person, but common in the nature of almost all individuals that I met with shared the same theme. So I wanted to share those items with you before we got too far. So the positive themes that I would share with you are, I think just about every single person that I talked to referenced the Bramble Valley School District having great schools. I would also tell you that nearly every person that I spoke with referenced the great teachers that they had in their classrooms and the great work that was being done in those classrooms, and they just sung praises of our teachers. So that is an extremely positive thing that I heard that was reoccurring. Another item that I heard that, I would tell you I heard and then I've also experienced, and it's very powerful, and that is we have tremendous ownership within our district. We have a strong administrative team who has valuable, valuable years of experience within the district and have built, in many situations, have built schools such as their own, is how I would put it. So tremendous ownership within our district, which is an extremely positive thing and a very powerful thing. The one item, the one item that seemed to continually come up surrounded disconnect. And I would say that it is a matter of our circumstances regarding growth. The larger, you started as a relatively small district in nature, and then over the years, over the past few decades, you've seen expansive growth. And when you have expansive growth, it becomes harder to feel connected because you have a building down here and a building over there. And I believe that as a district, you took a very proactive approach to disconnect even before I got here with the development of an intermediate school. You now become more connected even earlier with that 5-6 building. So that was an area that I heard for a lot of people, an common theme for the opportunity for growth is becoming more connected. And I would tell you connected top-down, I would tell you connected vertically, disconnect was a common theme or an area for opportunity for growth. First, I'm going to just outline some action items and then also some of the major components or the major areas that the plan will be addressing. I want to be very clear that the action items are phased and collaborative in nature. We cannot do, we cannot do everything in a one-month period. Things take time. And it's very important to spend the amount of time necessary to make certain that things are done well and done correctly. I would also tell you that, again, the action items are collaborative in nature, and I would strongly suggest not to overthink the items and the action items that I presented to you today. The mantra that I believe in is just keep it as simple as possible, but no simpler. So moving forward, action items are phased and collaborative. The major components that I'm going to discuss are, I titled them or labeled them, teaching and learning, technology, governance, district-wide strategic planning, timeline, which was a major component of the 100-day entrance plan, as our district wants to develop a district-wide strategic plan. And then also just a couple of initiatives that I want to share with you that I, we intend to move forward with for next year. I will ask for questions after each session because I don't want you to have to try and ask a question on teaching and learning, any of the items surrounding that later. So at the end of each component, there's certainly an opportunity for questions. So first and foremost, this winter, I will conduct a teacher needs survey. Basically, it's a Likert scale survey. It's ultimately survey research to gain insight into what our practitioners feel they need. As a new superintendent, I certainly trust and respect my administration, but I'm trying to gain a greater understanding of district needs. Now, with all of that being said, I will tell you that the amount of resources available never are in pace with the needs. But it does help us identify what needs there are perceptually from our staff, all the way from grade level to building level to the various groups or subgroups of staff. So that'll be a way for me to gain insight into what our teachers perceptually believe they need as we move forward in allocating resources and making some recommendations and decisions. I would tell you this, is our administrative team is extremely strong, and I enjoy all of our collaborative opportunities with our administrative council meetings. Overall, they do a great job, and I really appreciate the feedback and the insight that they give. I would tell you that later, one of the district-wide initiatives that I'll be presenting actually came from an administrative council member. In the grow and glow, we do things called grows and glows in our administrative council meetings that some of our administrators really love. Obviously, a grow is an area that they feel they could improve, or their school building could improve a little bit, and a glow is something that's going extremely well. Again, just one more approach the administrative team takes to share and collaborate on something that's going really well, or something that they need improvement on. And the idea is, is that when you walk away, you're able to have a professional conversation on, hey, I heard you're really doing well with that character initiative that you're doing in your building. Tell me more about it. So the idea is to build collaboration. So anyway, instructional leadership, our administrative team. I believe that it's important to draw upon one another's expertise. Our administrative team has so much knowledge, so much experience, and so much expertise that we have the opportunity to sit down and say critical questions. What are they to inspire instructional excellence and innovations in your classroom? For example, hypothetically, you have a teacher who's been with us for seven years, and you've seen good things, but you want to push him to another level. What are some ways and some critical questions you ask them to inspire reflection and inspire them to take it to another level? So more of the story is, it's a collaborative activity for we as an administrative team to develop critical questions, and now I'm able to draw upon all of Principal Horace's instructional experience and knowledge, and I'm able to draw upon Dr. Telkot's instructional knowledge and experience, and some of the things maybe they've done or asked staff members, teachers in particular, to push them to instructional excellence or innovation. So that's just an example of a type of activity that we'll partake in. Another piece that the administrative team will be doing over the course of this year, and I'm not going to say it's going to change, I'm not going to say that it's going to be different, or stay the same, I'm saying we need to evaluate our evaluation platform. Not the system itself. The South Dakota Framework for Teaching is what it is. It is not that piece, but it's more so the platform in which we conduct our evaluations. We utilize TeachScape this year, or Frontline, sorry, I apologize, Frontline. More of the story is, I want to have a critical conversation with our administrative team on the platform itself and discuss strengths, weaknesses, those types of things, and determine if it's what we want to do for the future, if it's the direction we want to go for the future, or if we want to develop our own district tool and weigh the pros and the cons and those things. But that's an administrative-type thing that surrounds instructional leadership that is going to be critically important. Lastly, the ability to build professional capacity as a school district is hugely important for improving student outcomes, improving student successes. Teachers watching teachers is ultimately a professional development strategy, whereas our teachers go from one building to another building, and they have the ability to observe and watch a teacher, and following their observation, there are three or four guided questions for them to stimulate conversation with that other teacher. I would tell you that we have great potential for internal professional capacity building, all while building district-wide collaboration. So I would put it to you in a Reader's Digest version like this. A first or second grade teacher at Fred Assam travels to a first or second grade room in RBE, and they observe a math lesson and a reading lesson. Following that math lesson and reading lesson, there are three or four critical questions to spur conversation, professional dialogue between those teachers. The idea being, our people are our greatest resource. Our people are our greatest resource. And that also builds that level of collaboration and that relationship so that in the future, they're also able to continue to collaborate on a wide variety of items. So again, getting connected, when I talk about overcoming the, being disconnected, that's a way of getting connected. I tell you, you can move from high school, middle school, you can move from middle school to intermediate school. There's a wide variety of ways in which we can utilize this. Like I said, the common theme was we have great teachers. We have great teachers. So let our great teachers show their very best with our other teachers. Now, I'll tell you, this doesn't happen in the snap of a finger, because evidently, we don't know exactly what we need, or I don't know exactly what we need. But what we can do is that with a three-year phase, and we can spend the remainder of this year discussing how this might look. Like I said, our administrative council, extremely valuable experience, great insight, discuss how this might look and how this could be a great thing for us. Then you ultimately spend the year planning on how you strategize, who goes where, those types of things, identifying those types of components within the plan. And then ultimately, you spend a third year planning. Following a year of implementation, you evaluate from your teachers, you say, you ask your teachers, how was it received? How did you like it? Did you believe it was valuable? Did it increase the professional collaboration amongst schools and amongst staff members, et cetera? You're going to ask me, well, that's going to cost money? Yeah. The truth is, is for about 15 grand, we can train, not train, but we can offer a half a day of professional development opportunity and collaborative, professional collaboration to approximately 300 teachers. 15,000 bucks, 300 teachers. A sub is $110 a day, half a day each, provides additional time for collaboration in those types of work. So that is a professional development strategy that we will be looking at. So with that being said, any questions on teaching and learning component that I may not have addressed? Again, keeping it as simple as possible, but no simpler. Questions? Not yet? Okay, technology. It's my intent to form a technology committee. The exact makeup of said committee, I cannot give you at this time as I am still pondering exactly what that makeup should look like. It needs to be, it needs to be small enough so that it's able to be productive and move us forward, but large enough in order to encapsulate all of the items necessary so that we're able to do a quality job. What we need to do is we need to evaluate and assess our current digital footprint. And I know you're probably asking yourself, what is a digital footprint? School website, social media, how do all of those things play together? To make it, to make it as simple as possible, we need to grade ourselves. We need to look at our current digital footprint and grade ourselves and see if there's areas where we need to improve, how we're disseminating information. Is our, is our information able to be navigated by the normal, run-of-the-mill person? I know exactly where the soup's on is. I do, because I go there once a week and deal with it. Could anybody that just wanted to find it go out and find it easily? So ultimately, we need to grade ourselves and then formulate a plan moving forward. K-12 technology framework. There have been so many changes, and there are changes still occurring. I'll go to the Be the Smart Lab, I'll go to the High School One-to-One Initiative, I'll go to Dr. Telkot's grant for online curriculum, I'll go to the Smart Lab at the middle school. We've seen a tremendous amount of change in the last, I'll say, three years within the district. We need to develop a framework that aligns curriculum, instruction, and then ultimately devices. Again, that's a process that will take some time as we are, we will identify gaps within curriculum and how things have changed because of those changes. But that is ultimately, that is ultimately another item for that group. So on that piece, are there any questions?
Let me just comment on the technology as you think about the makeup of that group. I hope that you consider including people who are skeptics about technology.
Sure.
I think we want to have both people who are enthused and ready to go forward quickly, and people who have legitimate questions about how quickly we should go, because I think that gives you good balance.
Very good insight. Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Sure. What's the committee going to do? Is the committee going to evaluate and assess the digital footprint and discuss technology framework, or what is your committee going to do?
Yep, that would be, that would ultimately be the task of the committee, with the first, with the first piece being evaluating and assessing the current digital footprint, and then moving from there to the framework ultimately in and of itself.
With technology changing so fast, you mean it's obsolete, what you've developed today is obsolete tomorrow. How do you anticipate to keep ahead of this, but yet it's not obsolete when we get these devices implemented into our facilities?
Sure. Well, I don't know if there is a way to guarantee that it won't be obsolete in, you know, five or 10 years. I would say it certainly has relevance in the relative short term, three to five years, if that makes sense. I don't know how old the computer is in front of you, but I'd guess about that old, so. Anything else? Okay, governance. First, school and student handbooks. Administratively, we need to review and evaluate the format of our student handbooks. We need to ensure that our student handbooks are aligned with our practices and our procedures. And then we need to ultimately evaluate the format and whether or not they're user-friendly, and the format in which they're able to be disseminated, those types of things. So that's an administrative review from the school student handbook that needs to partake. Ultimately, the school board policy manual, it would be my recommendation that we utilize Associated School Board Policy Services. They are willing to take on the project for, it's like three, there's different scopes, it's between $2,000 and $4,000 approximately. Gary Kaufman is the Director of Legal Services at ASBSD. Ultimately, they go through your entire policy book, review verbiage, review law changes that may have occurred since the last time the policy book was updated, et cetera. It's approximately a six-month process. The way in which that, the way in which that works is myself would communicate with Gary Kaufman or ASBSD Policy and Legal Services. They ultimately provide you with feedback and insight on policies that you may have. And then the executive committee would be the school board policy committees, near as I can gather. Then they would be also charged with reviewing such recommendations, and then ultimately, we'd come to the Board of Education. So I don't know when the last time the policy manual was evaluated, but it would be my recommendation that we do, we do look at that, and then while we're doing that, we make certain that our student handbooks are consistent to our school board policy books, and they are not conflicting. So again, another piece of making certain everything is connected and patches up. Ultimately, the goal to have that review completed, that review completed prior to the start of next school year. So that would ultimately be the goal for that, for those two projects. Questions?
So that sounds, I think it's always a good idea to review handbooks and policies and so forth. Is there anything in particular that is inspiring you to think that this is a, you know, high priority in the school board policy manual? Is there, are you noticing disconnects, or is it just kind of a preventative, let's take advantage of the services offered by ASBSD and just kind of do a thorough review?
Sure. I would tell you in my limited experience, on a couple of situations, I have found some things that didn't jive necessarily, and that has spurred the idea that it may be a good idea to utilize that service and go from there.
Well, but we've been using the services there, and since Gary Kaufman has been there, we've been really finding his policies to be really helpful. And it does make sense that we might have sort of a piecemeal approach at this point, so that's an interesting idea.
How are you paying for that?
Sure. Ultimately, your school board would have a line item for legal services, et cetera, within your budget, and that would certainly fall under that umbrella. Again, the cost is not huge, you know, it's not tens of thousands, it's few's of thousands, so. Questions? District-wide strategic planning timeline, and I would, I would preface this with, I have not, I have not decided if I believe or my recommendation is going to be to utilize a consultant or a firm to ultimately facilitate the district-wide strategic planning timeline. I'm torn, I am truly torn on facilitating the process and the planning myself or utilizing an outside firm. I think there are pros and cons in both. I'm actually working with a couple of other superintendents, getting feedback on firms that they have recently used on their process and how their process went, how they felt about it, and ultimately, how they perceive their final product to be. So I would tell you that that is an unknown and certainly willing to entertain insight. What I would tell you is that the timeline, if you utilize a firm or not, needs to be somewhat extensive. So this spring, ultimately this spring, you look at data collection, you look at surveying parents, students, staff, page runs, ultimately looking for perceptions of the district, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities for growth, those types of, those types of things. After you get that data, you have to take the time to make it usable. And then you'd spend your, basically spend your spring/summer making it usable, preparing those types of documents and those types of presentations for the fall of 2017, whereas your steering committee, which would ultimately consist of your executive board and your superintendent, likely the business manager, and the steering committee would then, would then meet, go through those items, and then there would ultimately be focus groups established. So focus groups will represent a student group, a staff group, a community group, an administrative group. Those would be focus groups, and those focus groups would ultimately be utilized throughout the process. Then in the winter of 2018, you ultimately bring in community forums, again, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, those types of things. Show them the data that you collected and the information you were able to obtain. Through that process, basically through the fall and winter, between your focus groups and your community forums, you ultimately evaluate your core operating principle, your belief statement, your mission, those types of things, but then you also evaluate the data. The steering committee plays a valuable role in how narrow and/or broad you want your district-wide plan to be. Then ultimately, in the spring of 2018, you're talking about the plan being presented and evaluated, looked at, and then a potential adoption of the district-wide strategic plan for what would end up being the 2018, 2019 school year. The process is extensive, and it takes a tremendous amount of time to do it correctly. So again, to utilize a firm or not is, is one question I currently am asking myself, so. Questions? District-wide initiatives. Before, before I go into district-wide initiatives, I would tell you that there was one area that I didn't, I did not say anything about that is huge, and that is the capital and fiscal outlay planning, the management of capital outlay planning, our building projects. The reason I didn't say anything is because we're doing a great job. That's what you need to know. From the five-year capital outlay projections and the five-year capital outlay plan to the strategies utilized to invoke the facilities review committees when you get close to building buildings, phenomenal work. And I would tell you that in that area, we just build on past practice, and we build on the work of those valuable groups that have done that extensive work and done a great job with that. So if you're wondering why you didn't see anything up there regarding the building of buildings and those types of things, it's because build on past practice, continue past practice. So, alright, two district-wide initiatives. So, all right, two district-wide initiatives. Reading Links. Reading Links is a K-12 literacy initiative that promotes the importance of reading and supports parents and students in their efforts of reading at home. On multiple occasions, I have heard with this transition to technology where we're utilizing technology so much where it's becoming such an emphasis, are we going to lose how important reading is? How do we make certain that we don't lose, lose the value of literacy and the value of reading? So I would tell you, again, this comes from an administrative council meeting during our Grow and Glow. One of our administrators shared something that a district was doing, I only remember where, and this is where that ultimately comes from. So the Reading Links, basically what it is, is every first grader will get the same book in the Brown Valley School District, grade level appropriate. Every second grader, the same book, grade level appropriate. So they'll get it and they'll be able to take it home. Inside the front cover, we'll have our letterhead, Reading Links, and a spiel about the importance of reading at home, importance of literacy, all the research demonstrates, you know, if you're reading at grade level by third grade, you're going to continue reading at grade level, et cetera. The kids get to take that book home. Now, we're able to connect, we're able to connect our schools in a way in which, let's say hypothetically, we do this in September-ish when it's homecoming week, we roll it out. Well, guess what? You have the student council president from the high school go down and read to all the first graders at Fred Assam or something, something like that. Or you have the principal read to the second grade. Anyway, the moral of the story is, it's a way to connect our district in its entirety in a way to demonstrate the importance of literacy. The last one, the last district-wide initiative that I would bring to us is the Links Way. It is a K-12 character initiative that highlights who and what the links are about. I don't know what it is, I would tell you that that is, that is another collaborative activity for our administrative team. Big whiteboard markers, what's important to us, what are our core competencies, what are our core principles, what are we, what's a links? What is a links? What are our students? When we think of the links, what are they? We're able to develop that big umbrella and ultimately all operate under such an umbrella. It creates common verbiage. The important thing is that big building needs to change their current practices or approaches, you know. PBIS at the intermediate school doesn't need to change. Fred Assam initiative they have doesn't need to change because it can fit under the umbrella of the Links Way. The idea is that the common verbiage is created from kindergarten all the way up to being a senior in high school. We do it the Links Way. So that would be, that would be the second district-wide initiative. Again, both of those initiatives focusing on eliminating disconnect or the perception of disconnect. It would be my intent to roll the Links Way out next year at the beginning of the school year with every single student in the Brown Valley School District receiving the Links Way t-shirt. Now, we've got 4,000 kids, yeah, some people are crunching some numbers. This also gives us an opportunity to create community-school partnerships, so it would be my intent to seek sponsorships for the initiatives and continue building community-school partnerships to promote the Brown Valley Links. So those are ultimately the two district-wide initiatives that I would be proposing. With all of that being said, I want to say a special thank you to all of the individuals who took their time to sit down and meet with me, share their insights and their feedback on the district. It's been extremely valuable to gain a working knowledge of our district. So I appreciate their time and their willingness to meet and I also appreciate all those that provided names and individuals to meet with. With all of that, that would, that would conclude everything that I have for you and would certainly be willing to entertain any questions that you may have.
I just have to say, since those of you who know, you know, I'm very passionate about literacy, I was excited to see the Reading Links plan. And one of the things I particularly like about what you have there is the idea of all students at a certain grade level reading the same book. And I work with a lot of kids who struggle and one of the most frustrating things for them is if they're interested in books at a fourth grade level that they can only read at a first grade level, that they get left out. So I hope we use technology and make sure that all kids are able to read it or hear it or somehow be involved in reading that book and being part of that process because that will really be a positive thing for every single kid in our district. That's exciting.
Sounds like we have some work ahead of us to do. So thank you, thank you very much Superintendent Larson for all your hard work on this and to everyone that has helped. So it'll be fun next few years. That takes us to general business items, number one through three. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented. Move to approve general business items one, two, three?
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next, personnel consent approval. I would entertain a motion to approve items one and two as presented. Would you approve personnel items one and two?
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. There's an information only there for your review under communication. There's a Board of Edu, for Board of Education, there's a thank you note there for your review, which takes us to board reports. And does anyone have a formal board report tonight that they would like to present?
Sure. First, I think there's a legislation that ASBSD Delegate Assembly has been changed due to the winter weather event that we had. So that has been rescheduled for next week on Wednesday, December 7th, and hopefully the weather will hold out. But ASBSD didn't want people making the trek because the storm was pretty widespread, so it's rescheduled for the 7th. Thank you.
Just a comment on the safety committee with the leadership efforts of Mr. Schluckaway. We had a second meeting here the last couple of weeks and the group continues to work real hard at trying to bring some pieces together and just make sure what we have in place makes sense and probably also is really usable as a tool, not just something to put on the shelf. And so there's a lot of efforts going into that, so it's just a general comment.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, that takes us to travel reports there for your review. And at that point, at this point, that takes us to the end of our agenda and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.